I was very pleased not to follow the children. Thank you for moving me down the agenda. I'd just like to introduce also Christine Yakoush from McMaster University, soon to be an alumnus in several days. So I'd like to address and thank you for the opportunity, an issue that came to the Board of Health a year ago, and that was the closure of Bayfront Beach, but also a broader issue, and that is perceptions of water quality in Hamilton Harbour and the safety of our natural resources and assets such as the bay. I wanted to just quickly congratulate St. Marges while I have the microphone, the school that was here earlier. They achieved their ecocertification through participation in many of BARK's programs, such as the rain garden that we built there last year, among others. So it was great to see those kids out today. The community has... Does that normally work? The community has a very long and intimate history...
It does have that.
Gotcha. Thank you. No worries. The community has a very long and intimate history with the bay. This is Bay Street Beach in and around 1930, in the years just prior to the official closure through municipal fiat of the beach and swimming in the bay. In that time, there was a tremendous amount of infill in the harbour. This is Stelco in the process of expanding out into the bay in the 1950s. Into the 1960s, the harbour was described as a stinking rotten quagmire of filth and poisonous waste. It came by this description honestly, and it's not hard to imagine why the community came to develop the reputation that it did, and it's not hard to imagine why the community came to believe that the bay was a uniformly dangerous place, because in fact, it was, through either biological contaminants or chemical contaminants. It was not a safe environment for kids or for critters alike. The grey area on the map indicates the extent of infill of the harbour over the last 150 years. It's approximately 25% of the historical surface water having been filled in primarily on Hamilton's south shore, or the south shore of the harbour, I should say, for industrial purposes. But there's one little piece of land that I am here to talk about today, and insofar as infill in the harbour is concerned, it's probably the best example of turning a sow's ear into a silk purse, and that is, of course, Bayfront Beach. The original remnants of which you can see in the picture in the upper left-hand corner, that's the lax property. The Clermont access, among other very contaminated material, was dumped at this site between the 1960s and the mid-1980s. And of course, that's Bayfront Beach as we know it today. The important thing to remember when we're talking about water quality at the beach is that both of our beaches, Bayfront and Pier 4, are artificial constructs. Nature didn't decide to put a beach there, so you don't have the natural dynamics that you would at Long Point, for example, or even the beaches that we have on the other side of the beach strip in the lake. Of course, we're all very familiar with this situation. The reason this issue came to the Board of Health a year ago was that the number of closures through the years going back to the late 90s at Bayfront Beach was unacceptably high, and the directive to close the beach for the entire season in 2016 was in part, I would imagine, a push of this issue to some resolution. Of course, you may or may not be very familiar with the Remedial Action Plan, the governmental-led plan that's contributed to by McMaster and Bay Area Restoration Council, the Royal Botanical Gardens, among other many government agencies, including the city of Hamilton, of course. The Remedial Action Plan provides a number of performance measures that need to be seen in the environment following the works, the actions that are taken through all of those agencies. So I've put up here the delisting criteria, the performance measure around the beaches that were attached to it three decades ago or slightly less by a stakeholder forum combined with scientific input and so forth. So this is the objective that we're aiming for. Bayfront Beach hasn't come close to this measure in about 20 years. The issue with the relationship between water quality at the beach and water quality across the harbour is demonstrated, for example, by the poll taken online a year ago following the closure, the announcement of the closure of Bayfront Beach, which was to ask, should we give up the dream of swimming in Hamilton Harbour? Which is not the same question as, should we give up the dream of swimming at Bayfront Beach? It is not reasonable and helpful to suggest that somehow water quality right at Bayfront Beach is somehow indicative of water quality across the whole harbour. The harbour is not without its remaining problems, to be sure, but it is no longer the uniformly dangerous place that I showed you in that picture a couple minutes ago. The results I'm going to suggest, the results of that online poll, I'm going to suggest to you represent misperceptions captured in the question, and I think that it's wrong to assume, again, that the beach results suggest anything about the remainder of the harbour. They suggest only that we have problems at the beach. The report from the staff and the consultants that you're going to hear about it later this afternoon will speak to a number of options about what to do, and I'm going to speak very briefly to that as well. We did a couple of things in combination with our partners at McMaster University, the federal government, Environment Canada, and the Royal Botanical Gardens. We sampled at the beach last summer, despite the fact that it was closed. We also collected samples offshore in open water and in a couple of locations you'll see on the north shore of the park, just adjacent the trail, but in more exposed and it's fair to assume water that gains more circulation. The green dots on June 14th represent an acceptable level of E. coli bacteria with respect to the provincial objective on recreational water quality. This is the measure that's used to determine whether or not to post the beaches as open or closed and safe for swimming or not. Notwithstanding the fact that 2016 was a very unusual year, particularly in the spring for precipitation, I want simply to just demonstrate at a very high level the fact that we have, that data exists to determine whether or not the beach should be closed or not, and whether or not water is safe for swimming. These are results from June 22nd, a week later, and then a week later, these are results I'm going to suggest to you, and I'm not going to take you through 14 months, 14 weeks of the summer collecting data. I'm going to suggest to you that these data that I'm showing you here, poor water quality at the beach and decent water quality on the offshore open water are largely indicative of what many years of sampling by Environment Canada and the city of Hamilton have found, that the further out in open water you get, the better the water quality. That's not to suggest that there aren't other issues that might keep us from swimming safely in those areas, but with respect to E. coli, this is the determinant of swimming or not. Second thing that we did in the fall was collect on the same morning data samples from each of these points to try and paint a picture of what water quality looks like in the inbaitments, such as the Royal Hamilton Yacht Club or Bayfront Beach versus open water and in various areas around the harbour. Again, a green dot is an acceptable level of E. coli bacteria and suitable for, a level suitable for permitting recreational swimming. A red dot is above that standard. Now, the red dots, I haven't provided all the data, I'm trying to get this, keep this to very short, but you get the idea that in response to the suggestion that somehow the beach is indicative of the harbour as a whole, that's simply not the case. The issue is very complicated, far more complicated than I can show you with some dots on a map, but the general gist of the issue in that swimming is, with respect again to E. coli, safe in many places, many times through the year, is generally true. Each of the red dots represents a localized issue, whether it be the mouth of Indian Creek coming out of urban Burlington, for example, that's the red dot in the upper right-hand of the map. Most of the problems that we encounter, with the exception of algal blooms which are system-wide and close the beaches and make it unsafe for swimming, this is the issue that we face. Now, we're not suggesting that swimming is suggested or to be encouraged in Windermere Basin, or Windermere Arm, I should say, in the lower right-hand corner, in the shipping channel, and certainly not off of Randall Reef, where we did find acceptable levels of E. coli. But the fact remains that the city of Hamilton is actively, as it should, encouraging people through the developments that you see on the screen, the trails and open areas like Windermere Basin and the waterfront trail openly and encouraging our citizens to come down to the water. I'm going to suggest to you that it is incumbent upon the city to do far more than that, to actively encourage that people, the community can and should safely go in the water. I'm not suggesting that this is a short-term measure, that this is necessarily a program for 2017, but we have a long history of doing just that. This, again, is Bayfront Beach, sorry, I should say Bay Street Beach in the late 1920s. I'm going to suggest to you that my visit to Lynn Canyon in North Vancouver, where the city of North Vancouver actively promotes residents and visitors to partake in the activities you see, which I can attest are a lot of fun. It's a great way to spend the afternoon, and this is simply to illustrate the fact that infrastructure could be incorporated into our plan in the West Harbour and recreation, such that our community could have experiences such as this. And of course, if I'm going to suggest such things, I'm going to get the question, and the answer has to be yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well done. Good picture, actually. Been there, never myself, actually. It's not so bad. I have Councillors Farr, Collins and Marula. Councillor Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, great presentation, a bit of a history lesson, but you're focusing on the future too, and I appreciate having an opportunity. I always appreciate having opportunities to speak to you outside of committee, and certainly I'm encouraged by your sentiment that while we have made a concerted effort through your office and several councils before to encourage people to get to the water's edge, we've been very, very successful at that in recent years. We're becoming more and more successful. You're selling all the benefits worldwide, Mr. Mayor, and we appreciate that as well. But you're saying, let's not just get to the edge, let's jump in safely.
Precisely.
Through you, Chair, how? What are some of the ideas to actually make that a reality, the second to last picture a reality?
There are a number of access points that would, and I'm not, I don't want to prejudice the options that are going to be presented in the report that you're going to receive. We don't have an official position on whether the Bayfront Beach should remain a beach or not, but we certainly do want to encourage to the greatest extent active recreation in the West Harbour. So there are locations that would, and this is the reason for some of the sampling locations, there are locations that could provide better water circulation, therefore better water quality, and that's not to say that this can be done without, you know, a thorough investigation of the implications with a monitoring program, but not unlike, you know, we have for the beaches already. It's just providing, it's providing opportunities in different locations to try and maximize the number of chances, days out of the year, that we can get in the water. It's suggested, and it's certainly hoped for, that in the coming years, water quality across the harbour will improve. We hope to see that in 2022 with the upgrades to Hamilton's wastewater treatment plant, with work going on in the watershed. Hopefully, we'll start to see changes in water quality downstream, such that at least for part of the year, certainly in the earlier part of the year, when the lake is really cold, that the beaches in the harbour, or other facilities in the harbour, would provide opportunities for the community to get safely into the water.
The issues at Bayfront Beach particularly, it's, it's, it's the blue-green algae, it's goose-dropping, it's more than anything. Can you explain what it is there at the serp, at the edge, water's edge, that makes it the red dot it is, and with all the green as you get further out? What is causing that, again? Just remind us through your chair.
So just quickly, there's been analysis of the, where the E. coli bacteria are coming from. It is primarily from birds. Some birds have a bigger, are a bigger threat to human health than others, but geese and to some extent, lesser-known extent gulls, are the main contributors, not the only contributors, I believe, and again, it's not my, it's not my, it's not my place to speak to the report that you're going to hear from, but certainly there will be, you know, some of the low-cost options that, in the report, and this is true of, you know, the last several years, would be to deal with the birds. That may be easier and cheaper, and see what kind of response that we get in terms of water quality before, you know, steps are taken to decide what exactly should happen to the beach. But my real purpose is, aside from changing perceptions or trying to reorient perceptions of water quality, is to encourage the city to look at what else could be done. I think there are some, you know, really exciting opportunities, not, and again, the caveat of not without, they're not without their challenges, there are some really exciting opportunities, and the outcome of which, I mean, if we had a, if we had a modern picture of a safe Hamilton Harbour like that, I'm going to suggest to you that is the holy grail of restoration, with no offense intended to my fish and wildlife friends, but, you know, we can have restored habitat and fish and great water quality and so forth for plants and the marsh and whatnot, but if we can't send our kids safely into the water, I don't think that the general public are going to consider the remedial action plan really a success, so.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Excellent, and I appreciate hearing you say the harbour is no longer the uniformly dangerous place, and your studies and works have shown that. So we are headed in the right direction. That's your prevailing theme. Through you, Mr. Mayor, is it Helena?
Christine.
Christine? I wasn't even close. Come on up here. You did all the, as a Mac student, you did all the testing?
So I took all of the water samples to the lab and did the analysis in the lab, so testing for the presence of E. coli in our samples. I was the one sampling the beach samples in North Shore, and Environment Canada did help us out with the deep-water samples. And it was observed that the Bayfront Beach samples were the worst out of all of the other areas. E. coli was very persistent all across the swimming season, and that's largely due to the gulls, but also their fecal matter, like, stays in the sand, so even by simply removing the waterfowl from Bayfront Beach, you still have the sand to deal with. That is a reservoir for all of this E. coli, so it's not just a matter of picking up the geese and taking them somewhere else. And a study was actually done a few years ago where near Bayfront Beach, waterfowl was the main contributor, but as you went out into the deeper water, it was wastewater treatment sources that were large contributors to E. coli. But like Chris mentioned, because of the depth of the water and the openness, once you get past that Bayfront Beach amphitheater shape, sorry, there is the ability for the water to sort of circulate and dilute whatever contaminants are there, settle on the ground, and when you're in the deep water, you're not going to stir that up, and the water quality is actually much better.
One final question. So to have fun this spring or summer, one would need to know how to swim?
Yes. Actually, there are some, I did some, like, extra research to look at different structures that would be available, and there are different ways that, if you built a dock or some offshore playgrounds and things, there are ways to create a freshwater pool that could be a little bit shallower for young swimmers and things, too.
Thank you very much. Councillor Collins?
Well, I wanted to say thanks. I did have the opportunity to sit down with Chris, and I really think their organization, they're great ambassadors for the city, and you've really helped a lot over the years tell a story, and I think the one you tell here today is a different one, I think, than most people would interpret or, I think, embrace as it relates to where we've been in the past. Unfortunately, we've had to grapple for decades with that industrial skyline, and there's lots of baggage that comes with industry, for as much as it's built the city and done all kinds of good things for Hamilton. We know that there's been detrimental effects with the brownfield issues, certainly the air issues that we've struggled with over the years, but of late, it's been a lot better. And of course, I think what you're highlighting today is that there's significant, there's been significant impacts on the water quality in the past, but we've made great strides. And for as much as we've seen a lot of good things happen with waterfront development, with parks and trails and all the good things in terms of increasing public access to the water, we've struggled over the years with that whole perception of whether or not it's safe to swim in the harbour. And I think the information you've presented here and the pictures tell a thousand words as it relates to encouraging the public that they're not only welcome along our trails and along our shores, but they're welcome back into the water, with certainly keeping in mind, as a footnote, there are certain areas where we still need to make some improvements, and in some areas, we may not be able to overcome them. The blue-green algae certainly is an issue that I think, as you know, Mr. Mayor, it's been highlighted across North America and has been a problem spot, but the birds as well. Anyone who travels to cottage country knows that if you're in Peterborough, Bobcageon, Fenland Falls, anywhere in the Coorters, Muskoka's, you name it, they have beaches that are annually closed in July and August because of the bird activity there, and we're no different. And so we're not unique. The bird activity here is the same as it is in cottage country, and the same impacts are felt by people who live here. So I think the fact that you're out there educating the public, you're here, you know, advising council, and, you know, the media's certainly covering this, I think the work that you do is so invaluable to change the perception and to make, to ensure that, you know, reality is that people are welcome back, and so for me, it's just a thank you. I don't have any questions. I did have the opportunity to sit down with Chris several months ago, but I think the work you do is invaluable, and it's appreciated.
Well, obviously, I thank you for that. I'll pass that on to my volunteer board of directors and my staff, they'll appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councillor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I too want to thank Chris and Christine for the presentation. In saying that, I was with Chris when I first floated the whole beach crawl concept, and when he endorsed it, I knew I was on to something. So, and in speaking with Chris about the bayfront component, Lake Ontario component is an easy sell, I think, easier sell than the bayfront from an optics standpoint. But in discussing this particular issue with Chris, what was interesting is that the further away you go from the shore, the cleaner the water, and how can we integrate that beach crawl or swimable area within the cleaned or clean area for swimming activity? So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Chris, along those lines with a barge or another opportunity to bring people out to those areas, have you given any more thought on how we could perhaps integrate that into the entire process?
Before the, before the chair gives me the hook, I'll just quickly say, we, I mean, we probably, we'll spitball on all of that. I would, you know, this is, the idea you just floated is precisely the kind of creative thinking I would encourage the city to undertake around how we can take advantage of the progress that we've made. At the same time, I think I need to continually suggest that that's, we're not advocating for, you know, everyone to run down to the foot of James Street and jump in the water immediately, and you have a number of the city's health, public health professionals here who are going to, along with the consultants and so forth, be speaking to, I think, in far more in-depth into, you know, the complexity of the issue and everything that needs to be considered and put in place insofar as assuring that water and infrastructure is safe. But I think the idea of a barge or a bridge or something that floats and some, I like rope swinging myself, but all of these things speak to experiences that are quite different from a beach and would draw a whole different crowd and obviously be, you know, a really invaluable tool to marketing the recovery of the city insofar as we can, we can look to the recovery of the bay as an indicator of that.
That's excellent. And through you, Mr. Mayor, in looking at what we're doing, we were just going out for an RFP process with respect to the beach crawl. The response has been quite remarkable. It's going to be this summer, and I think in assessing the success of this summer, incorporating bayfront along the lines of a barge or some other rope swimming or some other means of having people enjoy the water of bayfront is something that I'd like to integrate into perhaps next year's beach crawl, so that bayfront, which ties into that revitalization in that court, thanks to my good colleague and friend, Councillor Farr, we can focus in on a lot of those successes and bring that water back to people. So at the appropriate time, what I'd like to do is to, I guess, provide notice of that intent and to integrate it somehow for future crawls, and I'll work with Councillor Farr and staff as well accordingly to see that that comes to fruition. So, Mr. Mayor, I just, again, want to also acknowledge that Chris, in all the years that I've known him, have spoken to him, his enthusiasm has only gotten stronger over the years rather than weaker, and that is something that needs to be applauded. So I thank you, sir, and thanks very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Congratulations. Councillor Green.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and certainly echoing the words of the previous speakers, having had some great opportunities to chat with Chris and the work that's happening down there around water issues. Could you please go back to the slide where you did your infill analysis, like where you had the, there it is, right there. So you will know, of course, that the Sherman Inlet, under a memorandum of understanding with the Hamilton Port Authority, said that it was supposed to be a transfer of the inlet to the city. In your work, do you see that as being a viable access place for people in the north-east community to be able to access the water? I've been down there. They say they're doing everything they can to remediate it, but what work would need to be done to open that up to public access?
To the extent that there are technical issues around that, I don't have the expertise to speak to that, but I would just suggest that it's impressive, having done work myself in other areas of concern, which is the label that Hamilton Harbour has, along with Thunderbay and a number of other sites in the Canadian Great Lakes, having done work on remediation in other sites, we have a port authority that is remarkably engaged relative to the port authority that you find in other communities. Their land use plan speaks first and foremost to public engagement and meeting the goals of the remedial action plan, and I'm not suggesting that they couldn't do better necessarily, but relative to my knowledge of the governance of other remedial action plans, the Hamilton Port Authority has a fairly positive outlook insofar as engaging in this way. I've made the suggestion that for those of you who've been to Bruce National, Bruce Peninsula National Park and have climbed that structure out in the middle of the forest and looked out in 360 degrees, that mimicking that piece of infrastructure with a small parking lot right at the south end of what remains of Sherman Inlet would be an entirely unique perspective that most of the community never gets to see. They don't get to go up one of these towers and look around in 360 degrees. It would be a really remarkable and interesting thing for people from across Ontario to visit Hamilton and look at the extent of industry. I mean, you kind of get a sense of that if you're driving up on Burlington Street, on the elevated part, but you're driving, so you're just quickly looking around. But to get out and actually, you know, have some interpretive materials and so forth, I think would be a really interesting, a really remarkable experience. So just in terms of, like, people are so fascinated by this history. It's not that, you know, someone from, who first started infilling this grey area could be with us today and say, you know what, it did look pretty much like that 150 years ago. People are fascinated by the fact that it's not just an environment that was really badly degraded by human activity. It was the wholesale obliteration of an ecosystem and replacement with an industrial shoreline. And so to try and imagine that whole process is really fascinating, and I think it would be, it's such a unique thing to Hamilton. We could really entertain visitors from all over southern Ontario.
Councillor Green.
I just know, I appreciate your perspective with the port. It hasn't been my experience. It's been my experience, that memorandum that's been sitting there, I know I personally followed up with them about the Sherman Inlet, and they didn't have nearly the vision or enthusiasm that you had in terms of using it as an asset. I'd like to pursue that memorandum of understanding until it's unperceivable, and so I'll be doing that in a different forum, but I certainly appreciate that idea of having that lookout or having something for, you know, the community in the north-east end to be able to access the shoreline, because essentially, we don't have that access.
the shoreline, because essentially, we don't have that access that's been, it's been taken from the community in this obliteration that you so adequately addressed. So I'll leave it there because I know the political constraints that you're under to speak about people who might be potential partners, but I'll leave that to my realm and just thank both you and Christine for being here. Mac grad, a recent Mac grad?
Soon.
Soon.
Any day now.
Graduated. Well, hopefully, you stick around and continue the great work down at the water, Christine, and Chris, I certainly appreciate you being here.
Thank you, and I would just follow, I'm aware I'm early in your agenda, but one of the great successes of the remedial action plan in Hamilton Harbour has been public access. We've increased by about 1,000% the amount of access to the water over the last 30 years. It used to be, as Mr. Mayor will know, as a former Chair of the Hamilton Port Authority, that effectively a chain-link fence extended the full length of the southern shore of the harbour and, for decades, cut off the community from this wonderful natural asset. So we were not only prevented from going safely in the water, but in our own minds, we were prevented from going in or near the water. So the idea of providing increasing amounts of access, not just to walk along a trail, but to do something interesting and to tell the story of remnant pieces of the south shoreline and so forth, is just remarkable. I'd be more than happy to follow up with you in the future on the issue and see what, you know, we might bring to bear on the conversation at least, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Chris. Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chris, and Christine. I apologize, I missed most of the presentation. I had a committee of adjustments to attend, and we were able to amicably resolve it. But I did want to add, though, that I had the pleasure of meeting with Chris and going through this earlier, so I want to thank you for that, and you continue to speak as passionately as you did the day you met with me, and certainly if anybody's ever had an opportunity, Chris has been wonderful in offering me and affording me an opportunity to take some tours in different areas along our waterfronts, and actually, last year, we went for a canoe ride, and I've never been in a canoe, so it was quite exciting, and it was all through Princess Point, which was actually my backyard when I was growing up, but it was never on the waterfront side. So if anybody wants to take, if Chris is prepared to take offers and take councillors out to that, please go out and see it, and you'll actually get a good indication as far as the sewer issue that we're dealing with, and that work is being done right now in Dundas on the water treatment plant. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? Through you to Chris, there is work going on?
There is an investigation into how the hard infrastructure upgrades necessary to the plant could meet, but not necessarily exceed, due to financial limitations, the water quality necessary to recover Coutts Paradise to its fullest extent. That work is ongoing. That work is ongoing.
Right, and it does, in a roundabout way, no pun intended to water, have a effect on our beaches along there as well, so.
It does. The beaches are to some extent enclosed and cut off from the east, sorry, the west-to-east flow of water. That in part is part of their problem, but yeah, that's true. I mean, effectively, the harbour is downstream of everybody in the city, so.
So I just wanted to also extend my kudos to Chris and keep up the enthusiasm, and you've done a tremendous amount of work and job. Thank you.
Thanks so much, and I would just comment on the fact that, you know, having someone, residents say, that was born and raised near the shoreline and have never been in the water, that is such a common circumstance, and having grown up in Peterborough, you know, water is life in the Coorthers, it's such a strange thing to have so much of the community having been cut off, literally and figuratively.
Chris, thank you. I've got Aidan Johnson, and hopefully, we can get to the report as well, so, Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Fred, and I can echo the sadness that Chris just expressed. I grew up in Westdale with Coutts Paradise visible from around the corner of my family house, and I have never swum in our part of Lake Ontario because my family forbade it. That said, I know that there are ward-woners who do swim in our local water. They're courageous, and sometimes not courageous, they're just cognizant of the good, healthy places to swim, depends on where they're swimming. And something very valuable I've taken from conversation with Chris on this specific file is indeed a better understanding of where it is safe to swim, and as a city, obviously, we need to increase and at the very least maintain our efforts to promote awareness of where the healthy places to swim are, and double down on our efforts to clean up the places that need cleaning up. Something else, it's subtle, but something else of value I've taken from conversation with Chris is a kind of geographic point about the differences between and the relationships between Coutts Paradise as a place that we can talk about, Hamilton Harbour as a place we can talk about, the southwest part of Lake Ontario as a broad place we can talk about, and then Lake Ontario, and then the Great Lakes. I think often, there's a tendency to think of the Great Lakes, and then there's Lake Ontario, and we're just sort of part of Lake Ontario. There are very subtle ecological and hygienic differences between the different parts of the lakes, which makes it even more complex, but I want to praise the Bay Area Restoration Council for raising awareness of these differences and these subtleties, and of geography, kind of a broad, healthy, wholesome sense. Thank you for protecting and promoting our local geography.
Thank you for that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I would just suggest, Mr. Mayor, in conclusion, that I wouldn't want, you know, the entire issue around Bayfront Beach to be seen as some sort of a failure. It was an amazing experiment, it was an amazing experiment, and for a community 25 years ago, to say that we have this awesome opportunity to provide something that's been denied to people for many decades was really, really remarkable, and all of us at BARK over the years applaud everyone that was involved in that. To suggest that somehow, to suggest that somehow that was a failure, I think, would be a huge mistake and a misunderstanding of the issue, and I would simply encourage my fellow citizens to approach this with an open mind, that money will need to be spent and strategies developed and enthusiasm encouraged and so forth in order to put people safely in the water, but no one at BARK is necessarily wedded to the idea that a beach must be where it exists now. There are many, many options that you're going to hear about in the report.
Can I just interrupt?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Green, we need a quorum in the room here. I don't think we have it, so.
I have a quorum, it's news right now.
So I see Councillor Farr out there as well, so we can't continue unless we have quorum.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could make one more quick point.
Okay.
Sorry. Councillor Pearson referred to the evolving conversation about Dundas Sewage Treatment Plant. I can report, I'm in active conversation with Councillor Vanderveek and with the Royal Botanical Gardens, which of course owns Coutts Paradise, about precisely this question, as well as other connected questions about how our municipal sewage is impacting on Coutts Paradise and the harbour. And it is a complicated one, and yes, the principle Chris referred to is correct, money will need to be spent. What we're figuring out is what the immediate, most urgent next steps are and how much they cost, create a plan for those, and then move on to the next steps. Suffice to say, those questions are being asked, and the RBG is part of the conversation.
That's an excellent segue to the report, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Chris.
My pleasure.
And you know what? I've been on it, in it, under it, and will continue to, and happy to swim with you this summer and highlight the virtues of swimming in the bay and the lake. If you could warm up Lake Ontario a little bit, that'd be helpful. Never gets past 64, it seems, so.
I'll run it by the folks at CCRW and see what can be done.
Yeah, see what you can do. Thank you very much, Chris. Thank you both, and a motion to receive the presentation moved by Pearson, seconded by Johnson, all in favor, carried. Thank you very much. We now have the report. I think Gavin Norman is here to speak to the report and present the report, so.